Well, I'd like to call a special meeting of December eleventh. Is today the eleventh?
No.
December ninth. To order and let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're not gonna have any announcements, but this was a special meeting called to develop the questions, ask the candidates tomorrow night, all four finalists will be in tomorrow night. And so Dick, Dick has given us a list of questions that he threw together. And, and we're gonna go through what questions we want to ask. In the screening committee, we asked eight questions. And we allotted an hour and fifteen minutes for each candidate. Most candidates used up every bit of that. It doesn't seem like there's very many questions, but we had follow-up questions as well. And the whole theory behind it was that we'd end up asking the same number of questions of each one of the candidates, so we didn't run out of time. So if, we can probably keep it to around eight to maybe ten questions that we could develop. Maybe eight or nine, so each one of us can ask three questions. But we always have follow-up questions.
Right.
And that's what we did. And for the most part, we asked, and we did ask every candidate the same number of questions. And we can type them out, so we just need to decide which ones we want to do. And I'd suggest looking at the ones that the screening committee did and maybe change them around a little bit and look at Dick's as well, too. I don't know if you, Dick and I visited the town of Rehoboth today. We're gonna visit each one of the towns of the finalists on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. And you could've come too Helen, if you wanted to, but um.
Oh, I know that, you asked me.
I knew that you had to work in Boston, so. So, just before we start, maybe we can give you a little brief report of what Dick and I saw, and then we'll. Dick?
Well, one thing we, the police chief Mark Duffley and EMS director Tom Walsh accompanied us. And um.
We went in separate cars, we wouldn't violate the open meeting law.
Right.
And we met with people individually, not together.
So we wouldn't, so, so actually, some of my visits were separate and different than Jack's. For example, when we were at the town hall, I sat and talked to the veterans agent and further talked with the, a past chairperson of the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee and the candidate who is.
Dave Macielo.
Oh, Macielo.
Dave Macielo. And, and Jack went down the corridor and talked with the assessors executive director.
Uh, the assessor.
Assessor, okay.
And I, I also talked to, had the former selectman and Finance Committee member, too, so.
And then after we finished those discussions, we went over to the DPW and the police station, fire station. We didn't get to talk to the fire chief, but the police chief and the administrative sergeant and Jack talked to the superintendent of highways and um.
It was amazing, the similarities between the towns. They have an interim DPW superintendent as do we. And their town is pretty much the same size as ours and the population's pretty much the same. And they don't have too many cranberry bogs, but they have a lot of farming operations there. So they have a lot of sixty-one A that are farms. And the budget's pretty close, too. Wasn't their budget thirty million and ours is like thirty-two million, thirty-three million?
Right around the same. Same budget, same population, five-person Board of Selectmen. Many of their other boards are the same as ours. Same, similar sized town in square miles. Forty-five or fifty square miles. And then similar amounts of highway be plowed. Similar, the, the police chief was a, a permanent intermittent, he's, he's a.
He's acting chief.
He's acting chief, but he's been active chief, acting chief, for two and a half years. And they just have not seen fit to move forward and appoint a permanent police chief.
And it's kind of amazing, because the command structure that they had and Mark Duffley presented a command structure to us several months ago to add more police officers in is almost identical. It's almost like you took it and photocopied it and gave it to them. And they have twenty-one police officers and we only have fifteen. So that goes to tell you something that, you know, we really need to, you know, beef up our police department.
Now, through you, Mr. Chair, for the both of you, were, was your goal just to probe about the, the town itself? Or were you inquiring about Macielo and how he performed about um?
We inquired about him in, 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 inquiring about it, you found out the background and the type of operation that he was running there. We'll do the same thing with the next three, but I thought it was important to bring it up tonight because it gives us an idea on developing our questions, not just from the standpoint of our town, but from the standpoint of what they're gonna bring to us. And this acts as an example.
But can you share any feedback that you received, because it would be relevant?
Well, I mean, for the most part, I received, you know, positive.
Should we do that before the interviews tomorrow night?
Yeah, I, I think what we should do is um.
Maybe before we make our decision, but.
Interview the, because it might be unfair for us to bring that forward where the other three candidates haven't been visited yet, so if we.
That's true, because you're not gonna be seeing the other towns until after the interview. Okay, that makes absolute sense.
And we can bring that forward when we're gonna make our decision.
Then we can make comparisons and work back and forth and talk about what they suggested and so on.
But what we need to do, and that is a very valid point, and I absolutely agree, is when would we do that?
We're making a decision on the seventeenth.
Okay, but if I am not able to attend those meetings and I need feedback from the both of you. I can't hear it the night that we're making that decision and.
Make your decision.
We wanna make sure that we're not having a open meeting law if I'm chatting with you both about it, so.
We could probably do a little.
Can we talk about it immediately after the meeting tomorrow night?
No, because we won't be visiting them until Wednesday and Thursday, too. So we could, Dick and I could do a.
I just wanna make sure we do it properly.
Dick and I could do an independent report and include it in our packets as background information for the December seventeenth meeting.
Or, could have a brief meeting next Monday night before the meeting Tuesday night to make the decision, like we're doing tonight for half an hour. I hate to make another meeting, but.
Yeah.
It, it would allow us to discuss and explain all four candidates and the visits so that we're all on the same decision level.
We could do that.
Um, because if you're gonna do that, we have to post that pretty quick.
Yeah, we could do that. And then what time could you make it, Helen? That would be um.
On a Monday?
Yeah.
Six-thirty.
Yeah. Well, it's seven-thirty.
I got a problem that.
Oh, do ya?
I have to be in Foxborough for a hearing on the Board of, with the Board of Health there on agriculture.
Oh, do ya?
Well, that's okay, if you have an independent report in the packet. I mean, I've already like really zoned in on these and I'm making phone calls to the towns, you know, in terms of the references and everything, so um.
We could have a meeting Thursday night if you want.
We don't even have to if, if it's becoming too tight. Because what I'm saying is, I'm gonna be doing my own homework I have already started and with you putting it, the independent report into the package on the seventeenth, I'll, I'll be okay.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, um.
We could give up.
In other words.
And I can give you.
I'll give you a brief report on each of my.
The feedback.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll give it to Elaine and she can put copies in the packets.
Yeah, just to feature.
And then you'll have ample information for Tuesday night.
And I can do the same, with the phone, you know, with the phone calls I make.
Okay. All right, so, I know Dick gave us this thing here, but I figured I'd.
Well, I just did that because I thought maybe you wanted some suggested questions from each of us and then we narrowed it down.
Yeah, well, what I planned on doing was taking like the screening committee questions and running them by here and then whichever ones you liked or didn't like, and then we can move into some of the other questions and we can do. Do it kind of quickly, I know you gotta get out of here, Dick, so.
Well, seven. We can, yep, go ahead.
So the first one from the screening committee was, Carver's rich in natural resources and well-known for its strong agricultural base. How would you create a balance between preserving agricultural history and the need for economic development? And, you know, that kind of feeds a little bit into what you and I, uh, we had discussed before, Dick, that the prices, the, the prices of the.
Did you ask these questions of the candidates before through the screening committee?
Yeah.
You did, so they've already been through these?
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
But what I'm saying is, we can build upon this, you know? So, I mean, the prices of cranberries for, have been down for what, ten, maybe fifteen years? Haven't really.
They, well, they went way down in ninety-eight.
Yeah.
And they've been climbing out of that cellar for the last ten years.
But haven't you.
And then the last three years, they bombed out.
You've met a lot of competition from other states and other countries.
Well, a lot of cranberry bogs were put in in Quebec, Ontario, and yeah, right.
And so do you perceive that as being a long-term economic impact on a, on Carver?
Yes.
Because, you know, it could be the, the start of the decline of the agricultural business here in town. And I, I think we really need to look at like land use issues with all four of these candidates. And this could be one of the primary areas of concern. So can we develop a question around that, around this thing here, expand out more on it? Because we want to preserve the, the rural atmosphere of the town, but we also want to realize that we're gonna have an economic uncertainty with all the cranberry growers. I, I think the cranberry land that's owned by the, the cranberry industry is pretty substantial in this town.
Of course, Ocean Spray is in a different category, so.
I know that, yeah.
Really, they're, they're doing fine, but the surplus will affect them eventually. But how do you want to, how do you want to word that?
Well, it's, it would come right around the land use area there. We want to preserve the ruralness, but we're running into a problem economically with the value of cranberry operations and stuff. If they're gonna drop way down in, in value, it's gonna impact the taxes and it might run into a situation where, you know, bogs have to be sold off or something. I mean, if you see this as a long-term type of thing, because they might not, because of the competition getting stronger and stronger and stronger, it could almost be like the shoe industry back from after the end of World War. Well, it took several decades for them to clear up, but we had foreign competition and it.
I would, I would hate to be the predictor of that kind of.
Jack, do you think it would make more sense, there's definitely gonna be questions about economic, business development, et cetera, in, in this interview tomorrow night?
Yeah.
Wouldn't that be a good follow-up question?
Yeah, so what do you want to ask for the interview?
To elaborate.
You know, you know what I was thinking for the first question? Is, is just to take, one, one of their questions was about giving them the opportunity to explain their background and their experience and all of that. And that was, they called that a warm-up question on?
Yeah, if, that's in this thing, if you look at the first page of this, it gives you that. Like to hear some examples from your, you know, building, uh. Yeah.
What are you looking at?
Candidates are introduced and invited to make an opening statement.
Oh, right.
So we let them make an opening statement, basically.
Well, I just thought, you, you got the citizens watching it on TV.
Yeah.
And they haven't seen any of their background yet.
That's right.
And so why shouldn't we have them give a, a brief description of their background, their training, their experience? And then that could be the first question, actually.
Yeah.
Well, they did do that.
At the meet and greet.
At the meeting last night, um, last week, and I think.
But that was, that wasn't televised.
Oh, that was not televised?
Yeah.
Oh, that makes a big difference.
No, but they'll do the same thing, because candidates are introduced and invited to make opening statements. When they make the opening statement.
Well, that's what I.
They give, that's what they do, is they give their background like they gave.
So that would be like the first.
Yeah.
Thing we do.
Start off with that.
Okay.
And then you, then you allow them to make a, a closing statement if you flip it over. Says, before we end tonight's discussion, have we covered everything you consider relevant? Is there anything important about you that you'd like to add?
Right.
Uh, or is there anything about the position you'd like explained? I'd like to offer the opportunity to make some closing remarks to the committee. So that's after the questions.
So that would be like your opening's question and your final question?
Yes.
Now you're talking about six of the middle criteria that you want to work on.
No, the, the opening thing and then ask the questions.
That's gonna be separate.
And then you have a closing thing.
Okay.
Almost like a campaign.
So you'll have eight more questions in a ridiculous, okay.
What, what may be a good idea here, since time is kind of important for Dick, is why don't we each go through our two top questions and see, A, do any of ours repeat itself?
That's what we don't want to know.
That's what we don't want to do. And then, if they, if they do repeat themselves, then another question will be chosen. And then we will decide what order to ask those questions. Do you think that's a good idea?
Did you do up a list of questions?
Yeah, I have my two highlighted.
Okay.
Of.
I didn't, I thought we were gonna discuss them and then see what we wanted to do, but that's fine.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, so, I mean.
Well, I know which ones I got.
Dick did some and you did some, so.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I'd like to ask this one here and the natural re, you know, is.
Okay.
As far as, you know, um.
Which one?
Land usage.
Please.
The first one. I'd like to expand out on that and say about the land usage issues. I'll tell you, you know, in the six years I served as treasurer collector, AD makepeace, every quarter they have a town, a meeting in each one of the towns. Because they have a thirty-year plan for their land usage, for what they're gonna use. And there was never any town officials from Carver at any of those meetings. And it's pretty important, because they're gonna be developing all their properties in the three towns, Plymouth, Wareham, and, and Carver. So I, these are what we need, we'd probably need like a town administrator to attend these things and get back to us. And also, you know, make a plan on what the land usage in the future is gonna be in maintaining the rural character. So I could develop a question along those lines.
Okay.
If you wanted.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Based on the first one that the screening committee asked.
Okay. Do you have another one, or are you?
Um.
Do you want me to tell you what mine were, since I already have a few picked out? Would that help?
Sure.
Would that help?
Well, I had the second one, too.
Oh, okay, what's the second one?
It's in here on the screening committee. Can you give us an example how you would remain detached from the political process within the town and remain neutral in working towards the best interests of the citizens, even when the citizens themselves are divided?
Those are two good questions.
Because I think it's important that in hiring this new town administrator, that we get back into the spirit of, the town administrator deals with all five members of the Board of Selectmen equally, not, you know, not just meeting with certain selectmen and sharing information with them and not the others. I think it's, you gotta deal with the board as a whole. You follow what I'm saying?
Right, and they actually have to be role models, too, to, you know, so that will trickle down to the rest of the town departments. So I think that's a very valuable question.
So those would be my two.
Okay.
So Dick, we want to take yours up? You already have a.
Yeah, um.
And I can expand mine out to be land usage.
I, I have a question, but it's not on, on the list of questions.
Oh, okay.
That's okay.
I'm just saying is, we are a small town with limited resources and many needs. We, as most towns, have limited funds. Over the past three years, the economy and state funding is down. How did you deal with your previous town on these issues? And I think that question is in one of the suggested questions from the Collins Agency.
Is it?
I don't know which one it is offhand.
Number five on the sample.
Is it number five? Okay, yeah. Like milne, mo, yeah, okay. Like most municipalities, money is tight in Carver. What's your experience pro, what in your experience provides evidence that you can play a leadership role in the financial planning process? A process the town believes is essential to maintaining its service delivery capabilities?
That's a good one.
We actually took all these questions and developed our questions from, from these questions.
Yeah. Well, that was kind of what I did.
Yeah.
But if you want to word it the way it is on the Collins Report.
Yeah, we could do that.
Uh, that's all right with me. Anybody?
And here's the one, this is the one you were talking about for the opening statement. Number one, please tell us about yourself in particular, how your experience and training qualifies you to help Carver meet the challenges described in the profile? And then you have a possible follow-up question, which would be, what about the Carver Town Administrative Job? Is, what about the Carver?
What, what one is that, Jack?
Number one, on that page.
Yep, all right, I get you.
Do, we could do that as the intro, you want to do that?
That's the intro, yeah. Well, that was kind of what I was thinking you want, would do.
Okay.
I just put in, for the benefit of our citizens who are watching tonight, please tell us about yourself and your experience, education, and training with qualific, which qualifies you to help Carver through its challenges in the next few years. That's similar, right?
Yeah.
So do that as the intro, we'll do the, uh, number five.
That would be one of Dick's questions, number five?
Yeah.
That could be mine, that's right, yeah. So we decided we're gonna do one. So one is gonna take the place of what you were talking about?
Introduction.
Introduction, okay.
That will be the, that will be the opening statement.
And then I had, let's see, twelve, what's twelve? Carver is blessed with many interested and capable citizens who are interested in serving on town committees. What is your experience working with citizen committees? And what do you feel is the town administrator's proper role with citizen committees appointed by the board to address specific issues?
Okay.
I, I like some question here to find out what their demeanor might be with the citizen committees and boards.
So you like that question?
I had a, yeah, I, I made it more consol, concise. We have many interested and capable citizens who are serving on town committees. What do you feel is the administrator's role working with these volunteer citizen committees?
So all you did was.
It's a six and a half.
Yeah.
You want, you like that one?
Because we do in our town, depending on volunteers.
Oh, absolutely.
Almost everything.
Well, that's critical.
So.
So that's the second to last one that you got here?
Yes. It's the twelfth, number twelve.
Number twelve.
On the, uh.
Oh, you want number twelve? Because you said you reworded it.
Well, I, it doesn't make any difference to me.
Okay, we'll do number twelve.
Number twelve is on the Collins Center?
Yeah, so I get two and um.
Go ahead.
And Helen has to come up with two.
Go ahead.
Okay, um. The first one I want to ask is kind of like a combination of number six on the sample interview questions list and the overview from Richard Kobashi. Okay, I'll read both, both of them to you.
So what are you reading?
I would consolidate the question.
So you're reading six?
Six and eleven from the other list, I, I'd like to consolidate it into one. So I will read them both to you. In your experience, have you had occasion to design, direct, or oversee the reduction of expenses in certain departments or community-wide? If so, describe your role, the process you utilize, the degree of success achieved, and what you would do differently if you had to do it again. Do you like that question to begin with?
Yeah, read it again. So you combined the two of them and added something to it?
No, 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 that's the first one. And then I'm gonna read the other one and.
No, let, read the first one to us, because I'm trying to figure out where you got it from. You said number six?
Yeah, I just read it.
It's off this sample list, Jack?
From the sample interview, I'm sorry, Jack.
Leave it or not, that was from the first town administrator search that we did.
Yeah, I liked it.
Yeah.
Okay, and then number eleven.
On the same page?
From the November twenty-sixth, Richard Kobashi memo, his list. The list that we were, that, um, Dick got his questions off of. Even though Carver has a balanced, balanced budget, the prolonged period of slow economic growth is placing pressure on the town. If the town downturn continues, the town may face the need to sustain stir, oh my goodness, sorry, to sustain service levels with fewer people. What in your experience prepares you to manage in this kind of environment? So it's kind of the same, you know.
Yeah.
The economy's going down, we may have to work with fewer people, how will you manage it? So that would be my first question.
That's pretty good. You weren't even on that tour with us today, but that's what we found out that in the past two or three years have had two different layoffs to cut the departments down.
Well, you, you know, experience is, um, so that would be my first question, is that okay?
Oh, I thought those were two questions.
No, it's kind of all combined into one, you know. If I, I'm gonna reword both of those into one question.
Okay. I'll call it one A and one B.
Yeah, I mean, it's basically with the economy turning, going down, there may be a need to reduce employees. Do you have any experience in this type of environment? And what would you do to be able to accommodate the economic downturn?
What you do is you have to reword them, email them to either Diane or Elaine, all three of us should.
So we can get it.
And they, she can put them in, and put them in.
So it'll be, and it will be one question.
Random order. It'll be one sheet that we'll have, that we can, she can put an H next to each one, or a D, or a J. And we'll know whose questions are what, you know?
I'll do that.
Because basically what we did in the screening committee, we gave each person a question to ask. And then anyone else could do follow-up questions. We wanted to make sure we hit every candidate with the same question.
Yeah, we want to go through the same questions.
And then my, my other one, tell me if you're okay with it. In Carver, some of the department heads report directly to the Board of Selectmen through the town administrator. Some report to elected boards, and some are elected directly by citizens. How do you manage motivating and ensure the department heads are fully accountable for the services they deliver in this kind of complex structure? Similarly, how would you manage relationships with elected boards and appointed committees?
Is that one you made up, you didn't fault?
It's number four on the Collins Center.
It's number four, and I think it's important, because that's one thing I have learned quickly as.
Oh, that's number four?
Yeah, as a new Board of Selectmen, is that we don't have a simple hierarchical chart. And I, you know, when I first came on board, I'd say, oh, well, that's easy, you just, you know, do a performance appraisals and everything's wonderful. But the bottom line is, the town administrator only has authority over certain persons.
Yeah.
And because of, you know, the way.
But by the same token, someone like Jack Hunter, who works for the planning board, reports to the, uh, to, um, the town administrator.
Well, that's my point.
Yeah.
Everything is so kind of all over the place, so you need to have a good leader that can bring that all together and have all of the different areas being consistent in terms of how they, they lead the groups. So, what do you think?
So we each have two questions, so we do one more. So we have nine, we had eight, seven questions before, but we don't want to run out of. But we don't want to also, because, but we're gonna be given a shorter time period. We had an hour and fifteen minutes allocated to each one of them in the screening committee. And for the most part, every candidate used up the whole hour and a quarter. One can. One candidate was shot, but I mean, overall, you don't, what, the whole theme of the whole thing is to make sure that we ask the same questions of everyone, so we don't wanna run out of time
Right.
in miss asking a question or two of one candidate over another candidate. Follow what I'm saying?
I did have my third question that I
Go ahead.
'Cause I was toying between, 'cause it was tough, but I think this is a good one as well, is, um, being as specific as possible, what would you see as the three most significant issues facing Carver in the next year or two, and how do you propose to address these issues?
And which one was that?
That was from the original sample interview questions.
What number?
This, this, this one here, Jack.
Yeah, which number was it on it?
Uh, number twelve.
Okay.
I, I think it serves a few purposes, not only...
It's nice having the samples, 'cause you could just draw upon them.
Yeah, exactly, and we, first of all, wanna know how interested they are in the town of Carver, that they've done some research.
Well, that will give us seven questions. We had seven questions for the screening committee, and we used up all the time
I see.
in an hour and a quarter, we're only gonna have an hour here.
Okay.
So, um, this will give us the seven questions.
Okay, that sounds good.
I can give you one that wasn't on there.
What's that?
My last question was, how will you identify problem areas in our town government that need improvement? How will you approach improving these areas?
Well, that could be a follow-up question to a couple of, yeah, that would be a good follow-up.
Would that be a follow-up to that question?
Yeah, I guess that would be. All right.
'Cause we, we have follow-up questions.
So, uh, what are you gonna do, you, is Diane gonna do, put it together, and then we'll have it tomorrow night?
Can you email it into them, Dick, your questions?
Well, my questions are right on that, right on the, uh, Edward, the, the Collins Agency, uh, thing that they sent to us.
Okay.
And the two of them was one,
Give those to Diane.
five, and twelve.
Okay, number one will be the introduction. Will be the opening statement, okay?
Right.
Please tell us about yourself, and in particular, how your experience and qualify, and help Carver meet the challenges in the profile.
Yeah.
Please follow, and then follow-up question, and then at the end of, um, the screening committee one there, we could put, and I'll read it, before we end tonight's discussion, have we covered everything you consider relevant? Is there anything important about that you would like to add, or is there anything about the position you'd like to explain? And also, I'd like the opportunity to make some closing remarks to the committee. It's almost like you're running for office, you know, you get an opening statement, questions, and a closing statement.
And where is that, Jack? Where were you reading that from?
Right here, I'll, I'll show it to you. It's the, uh, screening committee one, the back.
It's this one.
That will be a closing statement. The opening statement will be number one.
Mm-hmm.
You got that, and then the closing statement.
Right here. That's opening.
Eight o'clock tomorrow morning at the police station, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think the chief
Jack will show you, though, and then...
Uh, what's her name is still gonna go.
Okay.
I was trying to get the superintendent of schools to go, but I didn't get a chance to call her, what?
And then number fourteen, the closing question? Number fourteen was the closing question?
Um, no, the, oh, the closing question that you were gonna ask? Yeah, that was number seven, right?
No, 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 I'm talking about you finalizing.
The closing, it's on here, it's not number fourteen.
It hasn't got a number. You're gonna have to give that to Diane.
Yeah, you're gonna have to give it to Diane.
Yeah, I'll number them out.
How are we going to, uh...
We're gonna have them all typed out, and then we'll assign.
How many?
You do two, I do two, Helen does two.
Okay, okay.
And I run the meeting and say, oh, closing, open statement, closing station. And then what happens is, after they answer, I'll ask other any, um,
Okay.
further questions.
All right.
For that particular question, you know? What do you call them?
Follow-up questions.
Any follow-up questions.
So you want us to, did I hear you correctly, that you want us to email Diane what our questions
Yeah.
are?
Unless you wanna just give them to them now, but you, you reworded some of them, so why don't you email them?
Yeah, I'll just reword that now before I leave, okay?
You got mine, Diane.
I don't.
No, you got it, I, I listed them to you, I said,
Oh.
They were off that, I said, one...
You had something typed up, though, Dick, didn't you?
Huh?
Did you have something typed up, where you elaborated?
Well, I did, I did, but I'm, we're not using that.
Okay, then I'm fine with you, Dick.
That's just gonna be follow-up
Okay.
that I may ask.
I'm good.
All right. And, um...
And the questions tomorrow night are just from the board, no, there's no citizen participation. We're the only ones asking the questions.
Yep.
So this is opening.
Okay. Very good, thank you, I feel like we're, we're gonna know, know what we're doing tomorrow.
Why don't you send it to me at home, 'cause I'm not here tomorrow? Okay. Um, Scully.
All right, I'm gonna run.
Let's close.
Well, we have to close the meeting. I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to, um, close out the meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second to adjourn the meeting?
Yeah.